All right, I'll call over to the Tuesday maid. Meeting of the Dayton City Council, stand for the flag.
May I? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council's going. Mike, oh. Motion second for the agenda.
Make motion.
Travis and Scott, can I?
We have.
We change?
Yeah, we have one addition tonight, please.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm looking to add item S to the consent agenda.
S.
And that'll be the approval of hiring of an accounting technician position.
Oh, that was that.
That's paper.
And you have the offer letter in front of you.
Okay, so with that change, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Consent, I need a motion and a second.
No motion.
Second.
Okay, so Matt and Dave, that's with item S added. Any discussion on consent?
I've got one question. So on the liquor license piece, just want to be clear that none of these businesses have had any violations around sale of liquor at all, correct?
They have not.
Okay, thank you.
You're up.
All right, I've got a few questions. I had a question about the QuickTrip license also because it says off sale, but it appears to be different than like the Dayton gas stop. So are they selling something different than?
No, that could be a typo on my end. So I believe it would be a three-two, just the same as Dayton gas stop.
Same as.
Yep.
I was just curious, because it was written a little bit differently.
Okay, yep, I'll take a look at that.
And that's because they don't have a separate.
Correct.
Yeah, because that's all they're legally able to do.
Right, yep.
Unless they had a separate entrance and.
Sure.
A dividing wall and.
Stuff.
All the requirements.
Okay. Then on, for the payment of claims, stuff item C, a couple questions around that. So we are spending quite a bit of money on fire department related training this period. And I guess my question really is, how are we doing budget wise for the fire department?
Mayor members of council, this year is the second year of the biennium for the Minnesota Board of Firefighting Training and Education. With that being said, there's approximately $9 million available for training. So you'll see an exuberant amount of dollars, as you indicated, for spending of training dollars because in the second year of the biennium, it's an opportunity for us to spend, at least this year anyways, probably any amount that we would like to, and then get reimbursed from the MBFTE. What typically happens is, for whatever reason, of the 780-ish departments throughout the state, not all of them use their dollars. And so therefore, they have redistribution. So we submit, like, we'll submit for EMT and Blue Card and some of those bigger dollar ones. Anything that is eligible listed, we'll submit for reimbursement. And we should get reimbursed for those. So from a budget, it'll appear as we're over, but on the backside, you'll see it come in on the backside.
And those generally get reimbursed then as you turn them in, or in a lump sum, or how does that?
Yeah, so I have until the second week of July to submit those. I'm actually, just Zach and I talked about it last week, and Dina and I, she printed out the expenses that I have. I just need to submit the invoices along with what we've spent, and then we end up receiving a check back from them. Typically, I want to start it now because it's due no later than the second week of July.
Okay, great. I appreciate knowing that, and I'm glad for the training. I just was seeing some larger numbers, and I wanted to understand where we were at relative I guess that was really all I had related to that. And posting for the community development director, one of the things that I saw when I read the job description was, as a responsibility, was grant applications and grant-related things, and I think that would be a big plus for us to have, because I know everybody kind of has to pitch in and do it. And I think we miss opportunities when we don't have somebody assigned to do that kind of work. I'm sure we're not asking landform to do that for us.
We are not. Yes, we do have, in every job description, I think it has something to do with doing grants for your own department, but this position will be able to help us with all departments, likely to be able to help fulfill some of the needs with those grant opportunities and keeping an eye on them. Because there are a lot of grants that go unfulfilled because they just don't know. Or we don't know. We may be able to use those dollars moving forward.
All right, thank you. I guess that was everything I had on consent.
Regarding that development director, I don't know if we're going to be able to, I guess my question is, is kind of the criteria of what we're going to expect out of this position. One of those, sounds like we need somebody who has some experience with large area planning.
True.
And I don't know if, I don't know if, you know, how many applicants we're going to get, and it may be that you don't, you know, you don't get a plethora of options, but it would be nice to get that experience, because I really think that we need to head that direction, so.
Yeah, if we find the right candidate, we can always use landform on a one-time basis to.
That's true.
Kind of teach the process of doing a large area plan, so that they have the idea, if they have never done one before. Again, it's trying to find the right candidate at the right time, and we weren't able to find a city planner, so we need somebody with high level experience in that planning world to be able to do those kind of things, and have the ability to have that bandwidth to be able to take those things on when we do have the time to do them, so.
Yeah. Any other questions about consent?
None for me.
I thought Dave was going to cover this. He said he was going to take me off the hook, but he didn't.
Fell down.
I guess so.
I certainly could call or email. The train and training, $4,500, I'm assuming that that's something related to community development or community activities.
Say that again. It's train.
And training?
Train the trainer.
Trainer. Is what it was.
Is that you? That's you?
Yep, yeah, Scott, callsman over, Slonik. Train the trainers for Blue Card, so it's $4,500, pretty significant cost, and again, that'll be covered by MBFT dollars.
Okay. I'd thought it maybe it was for some activities, and we haven't heard what activities we're going to have, so.
Yeah, it's a little strange, because it's across the street productions, and I thought, well, is this theater or?
No.
Or what is it but the train the trainer part I picked up on?
That's it.
Anything else?
None for me.
Okay, well, all those in favor of consent, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. And now we have the pinning of Matt Hack.
So Mayor, members of council, tonight it's my honor to promote firefighter Matt Hackman at Station One to the position of lieutenant. With some of our retirements and departures over at Station One, I've been looking for somebody that could fill that gap and lead that group over there, and Matt fits that bill, if you will. He does a great job. He has previous military experience, and he's that informal leader. So I've talked with Matt for a significant amount of time, and he's done a good job over there, so it's my opportunity to pin Matt tonight for lieutenant and read him his I'm Matt Hackman.
I'm Matt Hackman.
As a lieutenant of the Dayton Fire Department.
As a lieutenant of the Dayton Fire Department.
Do hereby declare.
Do hereby declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the city of Dayton.
And the city of Dayton.
As an officer of the Dayton Fire Department.
As an officer of the Dayton Fire Department.
My duty is to serve the people I swear to protect.
My duty is to swear to protect the people I swear to protect.
Very good, nice job. To safeguard and preserve life.
Safeguard and preserve life.
Health and safety.
Health and safety.
And property against fire.
And property against fire.
And other perils.
And other perils.
To maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
To maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
As an officer.
As an officer.
I will never allow my personal feelings.
I will never allow my personal feelings.
Nor danger to self.
Nor danger to self.
Dieter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
Dieter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
I'll lead my fire company to the best of my ability.
I'll lead my fire company to the best of my ability.
With fairness and no prejudice.
With fairness and no prejudice.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Respect the property.
Respect the property.
And rights of all.
And rights of all.
Accept the badge of my office as a symbol.
Accept the badge of my office as a symbol.
Of public faith and trust.
Of public faith and trust.
I will remain true to the ethics of the fire service.
I will remain true to the ethics of the fire service.
And I will constantly strive to achieve the objectives.
And I will constantly strive to achieve the objectives.
And ideals that the fire service instills.
And the ideals that the fire service instills.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't forget the badge tonight, although some tried to make it look like I did.
Oui.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to open forum. Anybody here for open forum? You guys are free to bail if you want.
Have a good night, gentlemen. And ladies.
Okay, anybody online for open forum?
So anyone using the Zoom function, if you use the raise your hand to speak in open I'm not seeing any.
All right, we'll go on to staff consultant council. Update, Zach.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, we had cleanup data this last Saturday. It was a great success. The rain held off just long enough for us not to get soaking wet. It was a few sprinkles, but nothing terrible. We ended up with just over 120 participants in the event, so it was great to see everybody out. On this last weekly update, which I just sent out yesterday, I am looking to try to do a, what a, a more interactive budget program for our residents to be able to see the budget and understand the budget, so that they can see where we spend our dollars, lower budgeting for revenues, expenses, so on and so forth. It is a cost of roughly $10,000 to get the process up and running and started, and roughly $8,000 per year after that to have the program available. We have other communities that I did send out links for, Prior Lake, St. Joseph, Sartell, many others. Those are just some of the ones that they gave me access to, to be able to go and see, trying to get your feedback on what you guys think is, it is unbudgeted this year, so it could be something we do next year as a budget item, but I think there's been enough abilities to move our own dollars in this year's budget to be able to make it worthwhile. I just want to make sure that we are all on board before we move forward with this process, because it is a $10,000 investment to do the process.
And how does it present that information to the users? Just a web, the website?
Yeah, it's a website, so it'd be linked on the website to be able to click on things, then you can manipulate the data. If you want to only see.
Drag down.
Drag down different things, if you only want to see different departments, if you only want to see personnel costs, or supplies costs, or whatever, you can single things out and then present those in a graph form. And we also have all of our long-term plans on the website as well, so that you can see what we're planning for, how we're planning for those things, what the budgets are, as effective as we can. And then we have, like I said, some detailed information about overviews, you know, why the budget is this, why the budget is that, and we'll update that on an early basis. The beginning process is kind of the most expensive and most time-consuming process, but once it's in their system, it's really just more or less play in play.
And staffing to operate that system?
Is.
We got it?
Yeah, well, it would be this year's budget process, so it wouldn't be needed until the end of the year this year. With the positions hired tonight, we can, we should be able to do that. Again, it's a process that wouldn't start until probably July 1st. Takes roughly 90 days for them to get it up and running, so they would just be able to take our 23 budget this year and just put it in there, at least so we have the numbers out there. But for 24, we'd look to do that kind of more interactive, like the scenarios, overview, actual award descriptions and stuff for the 24 budget process.
Does it?
So it would not take another body?
No, no. It's all hosted by them, so they have all the hosting things, and it's all linked on their website, or on our website, but they host all the data and everything.
Does somebody have to, so let's say you're doing next year's budget, and you're going through, does it extract from the spreadsheets, or do you have to fill it?
Nope, so I just have to send them our budgets out of our system. I just send it, and that's it.
That's the yearly cost.
Yeah.
The data conversion and the importing.
Yep, they do everything for us.
So if there's updates, adjustments?
Yeah.
That's a separate cost?
Nope, we just send it to them, and they just do it automatically. So $8,100 is just the annual cost for them to maintain the website, do any updates that we need. We could do as many updates during the year as possible if we want to.
And it's not charged?
It's not charged, no.
Okay.
There's only one cost. So it's a pretty interactive website, a lot of cities use it. It's just something to think about. I'm looking to try to move that process forward. Again, this year would be prorated, so that's why we'd have the initial cost, because there's this initial setup cost, that's like, I don't even remember, three or four grand or something like that. And the annual cost is $8,000, but four plus four is eight, and it'll be right around 10 total after, we'll send down this year for the implementation cost, because there's high implementation costs when you first implement the system.
Did it give us a discount if we signed a multi-year contract?
Possible. I have not talked to them about it yet before. I wanted to get the feedback of the council before I went forward with the process, but again, it'd be something more interactive for our residents, and from all the things that I've seen from the other ones, it's very interactive of, here's what this is, here's what that is. And I think they do have a program that you can be the, like, you can do the old budget and see like, okay, if you remove this in the budget, what does that do to the other parts of the budget? So people can kind of be their own budget people, and if they have, enjoy that process, they can do that.
Is it housed on our side, or is it linked them from our side to theirs?
Linked to theirs. Something to think about. Again, I don't need an answer right now, but it'd just be something to think about that I want to try to move forward with. Again, it's trying to be more transparency. Transparency is a huge thing for myself, and I think it's good to have that.
I like the interactive piece of it, too.
It would be nice also if there was some sort of, because just presenting the budget, 99 out of 100 people aren't going to have a clue what they're looking at.
Yep.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to have some parameters or some sort of.
Yeah, like shows in graph form, it'll show the different areas or different types of graphs.
And then walk them through to some informational.
Correct.
Areas, I don't know.
Like funding sources?
Correct.
Yeah, even some simple, here's how your property taxes are calculated.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that one alone, you know, would be nice, but stuff like that, I don't know, I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah, again, it's not like, you know, I'm not trying to do it right away, but I just want to get feedback before I, and you see an $8,000 expense, and you guys freak out, lose your mind, so. The idea is to try to be more transparent.
I'm on board. I think it's a good thing, especially with those who are like, please explain the budget, and you're like, you got four, five, six hours, I can do my best, but like, here's an interactive way to understand it, take out, remove, you know. I played around with it before coming to the meeting a little bit and seeing what it was all about, and I was like, well, it's pretty interactive, seems like it would make sense for us, but can you take that data from year to year and reflect like, you know, from '22 to '25, here's what we were doing then, here's with increase, and you could show all that stuff, too?
Yep, should be able to do all those back data, so I'm going to try to get all the back data as far, at least probably to 2020, at least. Show where we were.
So you would go backward a couple of years?
Correct, yeah, just to get some background historical data.
Yeah.
See some trends over years, so you could say, what would this cost in 2020 versus what it was in '22, '23, '24.
Well, I think that would be a favorable thing for us, at least on the, you know, the tax rate piece of it.
Mm-hmm.
To show that we've accomplished something.
Yeah, no, I'd.
So that would be good.
Cool, okay. You guys will see something moving forward. I'll let you know. Thank you.
Anything else? Amy?
I don't have a whole lot. I feel like I should have something, but we've been busy following up with people not hired and hopefully getting the ones on board and up and running soon, so all great things, just busy.
Marty?
Mayor and council, I have a couple of things. An update on wellhead water treatment. I've got the first pre-procurement paperwork in hand. It's going to be a purchase of $141,657 for a motor control center. That's one of the longest lead times out there, so I'm going to go ahead and process that and get that paid for and get the order in as soon as possible. Hennepin County Culvert and Stabilization Project, the project is still on the same deadline for mid-July completion. Beginning at the end of this week, they're moving the sites from where they've been working the last few weeks to west of Vicksburg Lane. There will be some changes in traffic control there, but it's going to be accessible by the residents, but not through traffic, so it's not going to be a full closure. They are paving the areas that they've been working on to the east of Vicksburg, so that area is going to be opened back up by the end of the week. As the project moves on, I'm sure there's going to be a few other changes in traffic control there, but it shouldn't affect the residents. The contractor is going to notify the residents and knock on doors and let people know what's going on there ahead of time.
Marty, last time the county did something under our roads, we now have a roller coaster ride over by Elsie Stevens. Will you personally just go and verify that whatever they're doing is actually good enough to drive the crux speed limit on, please?
I will, I will take a look with that, and I'll take that city engineer with me as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there you go.
No more roller coasters, please.
So will Vicksburg still be available from the west?
No, it will be available from the east.
Okay, so that's going to move. The reason I'm asking, our school bus makes the turnaround there, so.
Yeah, they will notify the school bus companies as well of what the changes are going to be there.
They've got the road closed at Pioneer Parkway right now.
Yeah, it's going to be open.
Gotcha.
That's going to open up, they're just paving where they've been working. The county won't open it until it's got full paving on there, so that's what they're working on the next couple of days, so that'll be done, and then that road will be open and accessible from the east.
Thank you.
Some good news on the water trails funding, and the National Park Service funding for $100,000 for the project has been approved. The money will be available in 2024, as long as Washington passes a budget bill. We compete against many projects from around the country for these funds, so it's a big boost for us that we were considered to get these funds. One general point, I want to put the odd even irrigation signs out starting the end of this week, and the reason being is the water tower work is going to start on Monday the 15th, and I just want to have some kind of an insurance policy on there, just to try and limit the water usage.
Can we, so after that work is done?
Say again?
After that work is done, you foresee removing that? Unless we have some heat drought?
Yeah, I can take them down if that's what, if that's what you want to do, unless we have some other problem come up, but that, I can certainly take them down. I would only post them in the northeast area of town.
We should probably get that posted somehow, because there's going to be issues right off the bat, and I mean, people will be complaining probably right off the bat.
We'll get, they're on the Facebook page and the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, somehow let them know there's a reason behind it.
Yeah, a little of the tower work is happening.
Because they're going to say, we got all this rain.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, they won't want to know.
The main reason is that we can only do it this time of year, because the paint needs a 70-degree temperature to cure properly, so the next week is going to be where we get good 70 degrees. My three seazals are starting on June the 5th, so that's all I have.
That, that high lead time item, it's not like a control panel or whatever.
Yeah. Or controls are.
Are we still on track to get this thing? It seems kind of late for a high lead item. I'm just wondering what they consider to be a high lead item, so.
This is, the lead time on this was about 50, less than 50 weeks, so 48 weeks, I think, so the idea of getting this online by the end of, by fall 2024, I think is doable. So this, if we order this now, we'll have it in time to get it in place, so.
Okay.
The rest of the construction work can go on without this being in place.
All right. Okay. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Couple updates for you. Applicants, we're sitting at, we had 12. We were inviting 11 of the 12. We can't get ahold of one for a phone number, but way it breaks down, it looks like four applications for Station Two, six for Station One.
Wow.
And one for future Station Three. We'll see what that looks like. Process is physical agility on May 25th, that'll be at 6:00 PM. After that, we'll get a background check, actually, back up, interview, background check, psychological exam, and then medical exam, with an anticipated start date no later than August 30th, when they were at start EMT. So we'll see how that works out. Started to dive into some inspections within the community. Won't go into great detail on that tonight, but I have some pretty significant concerns on things where we don't really have a good understanding of occupants' change of use from business to business over time, so I had an inspection near a particular business that I was looking at, and took the time to go in there, and just from me stopping in, some concerns there that I'm trying to work through. So I'd like to come up with a better process, if we can, to identify when we do have a business change, change of use primarily, because the fire code then dictates what the requirements would be for that particular business. Councilman Trolstad asked when I was gone at the last council meeting about mental health, specifically for firefighters and the unfortunate death that we had at the trailer park here last month. I teach for MenFire, which, MenFire Peer Support Group, is an opportunity for us to utilize that service at no cost to us. It's part of the Hometown Heroes Assistance Program that the state legislature provides for us, so we have access to them 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, so that's one aspect. And then we also did a critical incident stress debriefing of that incident the Tuesday following that, so something that's extremely important for the fire department, public safety as a whole, just because of the mental health challenges that we face as a result of the things that we see on a regular basis. Last thing, call volume. I'll put this in the week of update for you guys to see from Zach, but we're 160 calls to date as of April 30th, about eight calls less than last year in the month of April, but we're still sitting about a 14.12% increase over 2022.
Evening, Mayor members of the council. Just to let you know, we did get our embedded social worker. She will be starting with Hennepin County, May 22nd, I believe, and there's a two-week onboarding process with the county before she'll be available to us. So we're hoping roughly the June 1st timeframe will have. So we're hoping roughly the June 1st timeframe will have the embedded social worker, starting with us and Champlin and Rogers. Also, just to let everybody know that we are receiving a lot of high-volume complaints about speeding in residential areas and all over through our city. So I just want to let everybody know that we're out there trying to do our best. We've been doing directed patrols in the areas that we've received the complaints, and we'll continue to do that, so.
Chief, those, when you sent out the email on, I think you said you had 93 cars and none of them were over 29. Was, was that, when, when would typically, when would you typically pick up speeders? I wouldn't think it'd be during rush hour, I would think it'd be other hours, but.
Usually it's during the high-volume traffic.
It is?
Yep.
Okay.
That's when you see the most traffic coming in and out of the street, so we tried to hit the high-volume times. That's when you're going to get your most traffic, so that's what we tried to hit. But this, yeah, the speeds that we averaged in that area for 93 cars was anywhere from 18 miles an hour or 20 miles an hour to top speed of 29.
Right. Okay. I'm just seeing, it'd be nice if we could do something with that information. I mean, it's really easy for people to see a truck go by and think, oh, it's just flying, when in fact it, it may or may not have been just flying, so.
So I think the other piece that's really important from that, I was going to talk about it since we're talking about it now. You mentioned that, you know, there's that speed sign there, and I actually reached out to the resident that sent out the email and had told him that, hey, that speed sign actually registers speeds, so we can keep track of it. And the speed sign, which is on that curb, which is having driven through that now a couple of times slowly to see what it's like per the resident's request. 16 to 23 miles an hour is the average on that curb. In talking with him, he recognizes, after doing research, that lowering the speed limit, as we talked about yesterday, won't do anything. He, he recognizes that, so even if we could, it wouldn't help a whole lot. He did say, though, the residents are very interested in removable speed bumps, and that they'd be willing to look at the costs associated with that, the city's willing to partner with them to get that done. So I don't know what that looks like.
We did discuss that last time.
Okay, I wasn't here last time, so I don't know.
So I've talked to a couple of cities that have installed the portable speed bumps. The residents enjoyed them at first, but then the noise complaint started, because every time a vehicle went over, it would thump them. And then the trailer would go over it, and it would be even louder. So then the city, actually, they ended up removing them again, just because of the amount of noise and damage to vehicles they caused.
So who makes that, and do we, like, have an open forum and ask for that, those residents, and see what they want to do and go from there? I, I just, I mean, if they want them, and we're okay with them, and they agree a majority they want them, and they're willing to pay for them, I guess I have a hard time understanding why we wouldn't want to go down that road. But I don't know what the right, I don't know what the right answer is, but doing nothing is not going to help them feel any better about what's going on there. And if they're willing to pay for it to feel better about it, I'm all for it, I just.
Well, if they're 16 to 23 miles an hour over, I'm assuming is what that is.
No. Total speed around that curve.
So they're not speeding?
They're not speeding, nope.
Oh, then I don't see an issue.
What, one, one thing we got to realize, too, is that, as I put in the email, they, my officers have noticed that a lot of the kids go out in the street and play. So unfortunately, we don't control kids out in the street. Speed bumps ain't going to help cars going down the street and kids in the street. So if the speeds aren't there to, the speed bumps aren't going to slow them down that much. You would have to have speed bump after speed bump to keep them at a slower speed, because once they get over the speed bump, they're going to accelerate back up to 16, 20 miles an hour.
What, do we have any idea what it does for maintenance? I mean, I assume they got to punch holes down. I mean, maybe that's not a big deal, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe they, they, the ones that I looked at last year, or the year before, whatever it was, they are punched into the, the blacktop there, and they stay out there through the summer, but they have to come in end of fall for, you know, snow plowing and that kind of thing. So you have to take them out, haul them off-site. And I think that, you know, for other reasons, just getting in and out of there with other pieces of equipment, it's, just makes it a little bit more difficult for everybody, but. And then we obviously have to find somewhere to store them and all that good stuff, which isn't a major problem, it's just, yeah, another thing.
So I think when we did go over this last year, or the year before, I don't remember what it was either, but we went down quite a few avenues, and the bottom line is, it just didn't seem like there was a good answer, other than the people are speeding all over the place.
Yeah, the places that these, the manufacturers, they don't really recommend them for residential. They're more for parking lots and those kind of areas. They're specifically designed for that, not particularly residential.
I believe, isn't Rogers, don't they have? I don't know what they're called, but they're more administrative speed limit signs, that they're ticketable, they're, they're yellow and black, or advisory.
So, so I know, I know at one point, they did have the advisory signs on the residential streets for 25 miles an hour.
Yep.
Prior to the state law change. I don't know if they've gone through the speed studies or anything over there to switch it to enforceable, to where they're at 25 miles an hour, I don't know if you've heard.
I haven't heard of Rogers doing that, no.
So, yeah, the yellow, any yellow sign is non-enforceable.
And it probably could also run the risk of people just get used to ignoring. Yeah.
So what do we do? That's my question, I guess, I don't know.
I, I think, I mean, it's no different than last time, we, we just, there's, there's no good answer. And so we can do things.
They're not speeding, so.
I think, you know, I think, I talked to someone else about this, but like, I grew up off of Pine View, and you, north of Dayton Road. You could see all the way from the end of Pine View, almost to Dayton Road, to the hill that drops down there. Assuming that was 30 miles an hour, a straight shot, so when you were walking, you knew a car was coming, you had plenty of time to get over, and the car could see you coming from a long ways away. It was this long, straight road, and now all the residential people have these really curvy roads, which I know the idea is people can't drive fast, which clearly, based upon what we got feedback from, they're not speeding, which is great. But I think part of the concern people have is, it's, from a pedestrian perspective, you can't see the car coming, it's there and it's gone. So they feel like they're going really fast, even though they aren't speeding. And then from a driver's perspective, there's a lot more blind spots on those curves. I don't know if we're required, as we approve developments, to have these curvy roads. I get why they're doing it, but I, I, and I'm not saying that straight roads are better than curvy roads, but it may be a solution, this, because we hear it in every, newer developments in particular, like the, the blind spots, you're going around those curves, and then they get bad.
I'd have a bigger problem with, I mean, if you have a straight road, you got higher speeds, and now if a kid darts out, now you got a bigger problem.
Yeah, I don't know what the right answer is, I'm, yeah.
And that's the problem.
Okay.
We don't have a right answer, a good answer, I don't think, other than, well, especially if, if you measure it and people aren't speeding. And that's, to me, that's a.
And those, those numbers you gave, Paul, were those averages of the total, or was that the, the high and low speeds that you were, you were talking about?
So out of the 93 vehicles, there was the lowest speed and the highest speed that we clocked. In between, there was roughly 20 to 23 miles an hour.
Okay.
So the, the two highest was 28 and 29, and the rest were kind of 23, 24, all under the 25 mile an hour speed limit.
And of the 200, I think you put 16 to 23 for the sign itself when I read it. Because I know part of the citizen's concern was, well, you can see the cops, they'll push them to hide, of course, everyone's not speeding. So having that, I think that your speed limit sign there is as helpful to, especially where it was, because it was on that curve.
All right. Chase?
A lot of construction activity going on, as I'm sure everybody's aware. Just a quick update on the contracts or the street projects down in what I'll call the French Lake area. There are six individual projects going on, all abutting one another. The city project on West French Lake Road, just, they're out there preparing for paving right now. They expect to pave late next week, might trickle into the, the following, but after that, it'll just be cleanup. So that one's a long ways away, a long, long ways along and nearing completion. French Lake Road through the Gray Coast site, they're in a much earlier stage, they're doing the deep utilities right now. So it'll be quite a while before that, that project is paved and opened. And just to note, there remains a hard closure between those two projects. So there is a physical barricade across the roadway on the, I'll say, the north end of the city extents. Dayton Parkway, again, split into two contracts, the city portion is that between 81 and the Cubes Development. They have resumed work out there, they got part of it paved last year, they're doing some curb replacement that got damaged over the winter, and then the paving will come after that. I don't have a, a date on the paving, but I expect that'll be in upcoming weeks here. And then the Parkway through the Cubes, we're still waiting on a schedule through there. They have all the utilities in, but have not started the roadwork. Hoping that starts soon, but again, waiting for confirmation on when they'll be out. The Troy Lane Extension, that's a connection between the existing Troy Lane and West French Lake Road, being constructed on the MTL development, being constructed by the inland development. They are pretty far along, and they're planning on prepping and putting curb in on May 15th, or the week of May 15th, and I expect would be paved shortly after that. And then the last one in that area, 121st Avenue, which is being constructed by Capital Partners. That one connects Brockton Avenue with West French Lake Road. Utilities are significantly complete, roadway has not started, and I am also waiting for a confirmation on schedule on that one. But we expect it will follow just behind the city project, as they need to come through the city site to get to their site now. And they don't want to get in the way of our contractors, so I think they're being courteous and holding off on, on the majority of their operations until we're wrapped up. And then just on Zanzibar, a little bit further north, but the other project. We did have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor on the, on Monday. The schedule they proposed was a May 22nd for a start, and they showed the work wrapping up about the middle, early to middle of June. But they did say that they may have to split the project a little bit. It would be left in very usable condition during it, but that could extend the project a little bit. They were working through some material issues, so I can provide an update if we get one. But if it goes as planned, it'll be wrapped up by, I'd say, middle of June, so that was it.
That's best.
Scott?
You got nothing?
Allison?
I'm good.
I'm good.
One thing I wanted to bring back to us, and I think we all got the, got the same email, but we, I don't feel like we sort of closed the discussion on the sidewalk and lights along Deerwood. And maybe that needs to be an agenda item rather than something like, but I'd like, I'd like us to carry that one through to some kind of conclusion, because I think we just left it hanging a little bit.
We did not, so we did follow through the process and everything, and we wanted to give the residents enough time to be able to attend the meeting. So that is going to be on the May 23rd meeting, the next council meeting, probably an official agenda item with discussion and topics. And so we can have that further discussion to make an executive decision of whether we're going to either move forward with it or not.
I have the same question.
It'll be on May 23rd, and that was to give the residents enough time to be able to plan for the meeting, because we did send out a notice of project for that project to those residents on that property, on the.
On Deerwood?
Yes.
Okay.
So that they, so that they know, and again, it's trying to be transparent, communicate, communicate with the residents as well, so that they know what's going on.
And it'd be, yeah, it'd be nice to know if, I mean, we all got the email, the letter this morning, it sounded like she was kind of not in favor of the lights. I know at least one other resident is very much in favor of the lights. I don't like lights, but I don't live in Deerwood.
Yeah, so it'll be two separate portions, one for the sidewalk, or it'll be one.
Yeah.
Agenda item, but it'll be two separate things, if you approve them, one for the sidewalk, one for the lights.
Do we have a, on that topic, do we have a map, Marty, of like, where the lights will be? And like, pictures of what they'll look like, because in that email, there were questions of like, well, how are the lights going to shine? Are they going to cover the path? Are they going to hit a lawn? Are they going to come in the front window, like, all those kind of things?
I don't think that we've actually done the engineering on it yet to determine exactly where the lights are, but I'm sure we could pull something together if we need to.
Will we have it before the meeting next, in two weeks?
It, it certainly has not been designed, we just had preliminary conversations with Canexus, they coordinate and install the lights. We told them a Cobra style, it was their impression that it would be a larger overhead instead of a frequent recurrence of these locations. And I think we estimated it was either three or four, generally even spaced. I can't remember which one we landed on, if it was three, was it four? Okay, and I think we just said, let's generally equally space them along the stretch between 129th and, I'll say, the Hayden Hills Development. And we, we showed them at least schematically, all on the west side, with the sidewalk being on the east side. But they would be the large overreaching, so the light would spread over the entire corridor.
And we're talking sidewalk, not path, right?
Correct.
Five-foot concrete sidewalk, yes.
It would be nice to talk about that, too, I'd like to know why we would do that instead of a trail, but.
I, I thought that we, when we decided we were going to do the sidewalk, I thought that we were going to put the lights over the sidewalk as well, and change it from the Cobra style to.
We could move it that way. When we talked to Canexus, we had talked about the, the west side, mostly less intrusive, so we're not ripping through quite as many driveways with the power and the, the lines through there. But since we'll be doing that possibly with the sidewalk, it might not make any difference if we.
I think that'd be good to have hammered out, and then the question about the path versus the sidewalk came up at the Parks Committee meeting, and Marty explained it, and I'm going to butcher it, is that basically, do the right-of-way and where some large trees and other things are, it'd be a lot more costly to do a path instead of a sidewalk. Right, did I get that right, Marty, did I miss anything?
I think you did.
Okay, we talked about it during the Parks Committee meeting, yeah, the Parks Committee asked.
So a path would cost more than concrete?
I don't believe so.
Because it's 10 feet wide, I thought you said, and we have to acquire the land.
That's what would be, eight to 10 feet wide, and the sidewalk is going to be, is it five, yeah?
Yeah, the, the trail would certainly be more expensive, more grading, more base material, more driveways, probably some trees coming out, more obstacles, so, and not to mention, we'd take away snow storage. There wouldn't be enough room to have an adequate boulevard for snow storage with the existing right-of-way.
And, so the sidewalk, you don't plow in the wintertime, or do you?
That would be to residents to plow their own sidewalks.
It's another game.
Well, it's, if it's got concrete, residents are responsible, and if it's trail, we're responsible.
We, we could look at a trail if there's interest, we could look at a trail at the time of the meeting. So the, the change would be, is we almost certainly have no boulevard, we just push the trail up to the back of the curb. That would make the project easier to implement, again, I don't know if the guys plowing would appreciate that very much, but that would maybe accomplish that, and then it could be a, a city-plowed route, of course, then they'd be pushing all the snow farther up into the yard.
It's also going into Hayden Hills, which is a sidewalk and not a path, so you're going to take a, you're going to squish everything down and you get there anyways? That was the other piece that came, I, I'm not, I don't have a preference one or the other, but this is the conversation that happens, so, yeah.
We'll have it next time.
Why not like a six-foot path or a trail, or is that not even a hurdle?
Well, I think you can make it whatever you wish.
You can make whatever you want, right?
Could a little harder to find pavers to go that narrow, but possible, some do, some can get as narrow, it was about six, six and a half, but.
Oh, that's the, okay.
Often they'll say they, they don't want to do less than eight.
Easily clean that. I say you have a skid steer blower that would easily clean that.
Yeah, we could get a skid steer down there, I think five foot is the minimum that we would do on a skid steer.
Okay. We will have further discussion at the next meeting, but thank you so much.
That's all I have. I've got a handful of things, so last Monday, I met with Senator John Hoffman, he invited my family and I down to give us a tour of the Capitol, so thank you to him, in doing that, I brought up the $6 million that he kind of put back on the table this year. He, his, he's fairly confident, is the terminology that he used, so I'll leave it at that, that that will come through. And then we were talking about the water trail, and I let Marty know and emailed him today, too, but he offered to help, where he could, to help us find some additional funding we needed for the water trail, so he seemed pretty excited about that. The Parks meeting last week, so I think, I just want to give kudos to the, the committee, they looked at kind of all the outstanding trails and priorities that they had, and they did some good work, I think, thinking outside the box to find ways to connect existing neighborhoods that have been here for a while, and brand-new neighborhoods, and get more connection to Through Rivers Park District, which I think is fantastic, is a good amenity that we have right here in our city, so kudos to them. I know Marty's doing a lot of work as well with that, so thank you for that. Marty, I'm curious if we're going to get a speed limit sign on Pioneer Parkway this year.
I'd say not one, still not one there.
Still not one there, no.
All right.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I've got questions around crosswalks, so we have a lot with all the sidewalks that we have in the city, and I spent the weekend and tonight driving around some of the residential neighbors, neighborhoods that have crosswalks. Do we have any standard around when they're painted, when they're signed, or when there's like a button to push?
So up until. So up until recently, the crosswalks in town have been basically along the safe routes to school, which is the South Diamond Lake Road and Bolson Lane. And we put the, there's a, obviously, the control, the light controlled by the school there. And then there's some other trails that we inherited from Hennepin County on Dayton River Road, and down at the post office in the old village. And then more recently, with the Pine View Trail, we've put in crosswalks there, one with a push button down here for Pine View Meadows. And nothing's signed on the other end because of county. Wouldn't let us put any kind of crosswalk control there. I think what we've really looked at is where there's a busy road, what needs to happen there. We've put Sundowns, where the neighbors were concerned about the park there, coming across Rush Creek Parkway. So we, although it wasn't in the plans, we did put in a couple of crosswalks and signage up there to get across that busy road. We've also been recently asked by Hayden Hills to take a look at the access to parks there, across some of the busier parts of the street there. Generally, I think what's driven us is more the interest of safety and where it makes sense, and considering volumes of traffic, is where we put them. So the ones where they're lit is usually on a city road, where it makes sense, where it's high traffic, like South Diamond Lake Road, Pine View. Those are where we put those. And then, like in Sundowns, we just signed and put a crosswalk in there. So we don't, you know, I guess the answer to your question is, there's not any real hard and fast rules. We look at each individual situation as it occurs.
So I think it's something we should really look at. I think if we're going to paint sidewalks, we should paint sidewalks, crossings, we should paint the crossings. I think that if there's a crosswalk near a park, I think it makes sense, in my opinion, to have a sign there, because especially in a lot of these new neighborhoods, there's these curvy roads, and you all of a sudden, you don't know there's a park there. That's a couple of them. So I think that makes sense. I think any road that's over forty miles an hour that we're going to put a crosswalk across should have a button or flashing light. So I think we should look at some kind of standard across the city, so it's consistent everywhere.
I don't disagree, and I think I can work with Jason on that, and we can pull some kind of standard together for that.
Perfect.
This is actually not an uncommon topic. There's not a whole lot of guidance that exists out there as far as when to do what on these. LRB, Local Road Research Board, has put together just pretty recently, I think in 2019 maybe, some loose guidelines, if you will, what to consider in certain situations. But there's no rules. There's not really any guidance. There's a ton of guidance on which signs to use and how to install them for the applications, but not how to choose which application is appropriate. So there's options out there, absolutely. We can put something together on, just to kind of standardize it. In these situations, we do this, and that can be a combination of sightlines, how long of a crossing it is, how many lanes are, how far, speed limits, those types of things can all go into consideration.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to see.
What standard does the county use when they deny all of their requests?
That's a great question.
No white roads.
To be honest, I don't know. And I wish I did, because we're at their mercy. For any of their roadways, we have to get their approval for signage. We've requested signage to pay for. Signage and the flashing lights are different things, and they will refuse to let us install them. The Pine View Roundabout, an example, we requested specifically for that one, and we're told no, that we can't.
And they deny the crosswalk in front of the post office, too?
Yeah, Marty was involved with that. I think they, yeah, they denied even the painting, I think, on that one.
Yeah, they weren't going to repaint it, but we managed to persuade them to. They were going to just take it away completely, but there was, you know, we had some compelling arguments for why it needed to be there.
There's a post office, right?
Well, yeah.
They were going to come back and paint it black, really?
No, they weren't even going to paint. When they resurfaced the road, they weren't going to paint it at all. And they said we can't do it.
How many of the signs do we have with the buttons?
I think just the two right now.
Yeah, I think it's just the two.
Elementary, and then the one at Pine View that was just as well.
So the one at Pine View is talking to everybody again randomly. Whenever I go out and get the email, it's like it's stuck in a loop or something. I don't know.
Okay.
So, contract is still open, so.
Well, thank you for looking at that. I appreciate it. Talk about Pine View Meadows. So I did want to kind of talk about a couple of things, I guess. So last night at the open forum, Hennepin County graced us with their valuable time. And so just want to say thank you to everyone that, the public that came out and spoke and stood up and voiced their opinions. That's why we're here. I think it's great. Hennepin County mentioned a few things I thought were surprising. They feel that Fernbrook is not yet at capacity, and they feel like more traffic could be on there. I thought it'd be an issue, which was a bit surprising. I think most of us agree there's a lot of traffic on that road, especially you can see there's driveways on that road more than anything else. That was surprising to me. They also mentioned that they review all new developments and impacts that they will have on the roads. I didn't know that it doesn't surprise me, I guess, but it's interesting that they know the development's happening, yet they still aren't fixing intersections to make them appropriate for that. And then the one thing he kind of mentioned, I don't know if he was trying to throw us under the bus or what it came down to, but he mentioned that the city needs to lead road improvements on their behalf. So, I mean, I don't know if we started as simple as just send them a letter saying we'd like four-way stops at all these intersections, and list intersections, and then they say, no, we're not going to do that. And we say, great, well, then you take control of it and do it. But I feel like he was trying to throw it at us, and in reality, like the Pine View came up a little bit, and how we bore, what, two-thirds the cost of that, or something like that, which, I don't know. It's interesting. I personally get really frustrated with the county, because it feels like they just wait for us to do something, us to pay for it, which I think means that citizens, in my opinion, double paying for things. They pay the county the money and us the money. The county should take care of it, because they're already getting the money to take care of it. That's my own personal opinion on it. But if, I'd be interested to know what we need to do to get them moving, and he meant, maybe we do list intersections. We, as a council, feel are the highest priority. I picked five that come to mind. I don't need to go through them, because they're probably the five everyone else would think of, too. But I don't know if it's worthwhile for us to say these are the top five in order that we see them as a priority, and we want the county to work with us on them, and send a letter to the county officially and see what they do. I don't know what the right course of action is, but it, I don't think that there's any time. I mean, Kevin was here and brought up the intersections in the roads, and candidly, he didn't seem to care. So it just, I feel like they're constantly throwing it at us. But if they're going to do that, maybe we take some steps to put it back, put the ball back in their court and say, okay, let's do something about it then. You said it's on us, let's do something about it.
I think after this transportation thing is done, that'll help possibly, because as far as the county's concerned now, they think we're going to take care of Fernbrook. We've indirectly told them we were going to realign Fernbrook, so that's on our nickel.
But it's not just Fernbrook. I agree with you, but there's other intersections. You're talking intersections, yeah, yeah. Three of the five I picked have done on Fernbrook. So, I mean, you've got Pine View and Dayton Road. You've got North Diamond and Dayton Road, and you've got Territorial and Eighty-One, right?
Did they help at all with the Dayton Parkway, Eighty-One crossing? The upgrades we did there?
No, not even the interchange.
So, no, with Pine View, we went to them and said, what can you do to help us here? Because it's, I mean, at the time, I think we were going to do it, whether we got help or not.
It's a bad intersection. It's a really bad intersection.
And measurably, it's not, but...
There's a lot of blind corners on the intersection that make it, I think, treacherous.
Well, anyways, so the bottom line is, we kicked in some money, they did kick in some money, and I think that's what he was getting at. But I just, I mean, the Parkway, they didn't kick a penny in.
Well, they marked down the signal cabinet we had to buy from them.
Tell them all.
A few things regarding the Pine View one. That was a different pot of money, and that's why they were able to contribute to that. That was not their infrastructure fund. It was specifically through their safety fund, because they had recognized that as a dangerous, though it didn't have a lot of serious incidences, they were able to pull from their safety dollars. And they did contribute to that. It was $700,000, which was a little less than half. But they did do that. Just a couple notes on the suggestion that the city has to initiate and tell us what projects to do. That's a new program that was very recently implemented. They're kind of taking a new approach, because I think they're learning that we tell them every year which projects we want on their CIP. They say, thank you for the information, and then we see it go on what they call a provisional list, which means we're not going to look at it for 10 years.
Yeah.
So what they've done to kind of restructure it, and hopefully I'm getting the details right. I'm still learning the program now. It's very recent, is that they're asking cities to prioritize, exactly what you're describing, prioritize the intersections, what the city sees as priority needs on their system or affecting their system, and then go to them and say, the city is willing to spend this much money on the project, can the county come in and fill the gap? So it's kind of a backwards thing, but that's the way they're asking to approach it. We are initiating, exactly what you described. We're initiating. In fact, I had another call on it today internally. We've talked a little bit with staff, and we're going to broaden this out a little bit to identify basically all of the intersections and then rank them, if you will, on different criteria. Just do maybe quick site visits, look at safety concerns, operation issues, and see which ones truly are or might score the best, if you will, for funding from the county. And then that can be rolled into the request to the county for funding support. So we're initiating exactly what you're suggesting or discussed or described. So, yeah, there'll be more to come on that as we develop the system, but we're hoping to address it that way as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. They're going to try to throw it at us. We want to do our part and get it back in their court as soon as possible, so then we can put the pressure on them to get things actually done.
Yep.
So thank you for that. That's the last thing I have.
Okay. New business. Item P, park improvement update.
Evening, Mayor Council. This is a discussion, I'm looking, myself and Paul are looking for the council to give us some direction on how to best deal with the situation that we have found ourselves in with the park improvement project, specifically the additional costs for the two bridges. They were unforeseen costs. They weren't part of the bid documentation. The majority of the cost is with the South Bridge, which is the Three Rivers Park District, part of the project. And I enclosed the agreement that we have with them, and it says that they will be paying $300,000 as the maximum amount, and they will expect the city to cover the rest of the cost. And I think the additional cost is around $280,000 for their bridge. So I've asked Paul to come, and he's got more detail on this, on how we got to this situation, why we're in this situation. But what we need to do is find a way forward with this. We've had some provisional conversations with the Three Rivers Park District, and they're saying they're going, they are expecting us to honor our contract and give them a bridge and not have to pay for more than $300,000 for it. Obviously, that's difficult.
Let me, let's back up a little bit.
Let's back up, yep, for sure.
Are you saying we signed a contract saying we would put a bridge in and then bid it out, where we had a, we did not require that? I mean, we have this longstanding problem with contracts that we bid out of that. Unforeseen circumstances can throw us under the bus, like in this case. So we would have to foot the rest of that. Did we sign a contract with Three Rivers saying we would come issue double arguments?
In the Three Rivers Park District amendment to the contract that was included in the document, as I read it, it says, "Fund in. Park District shall reimburse city up to $300,000 for construction paid or owed to the contractor engaged by the city to build the East Elsie Stevens Park West segment and related structures." So the structures is the bridge.
Can I ask some questions? So we got a bid on this, right, for a bridge that we were okay with? That was, I'm going to say, much less money. Then Three Rivers come back and say, nope, it's got, the bridge has to meet our standards?
No. We actually bid it to their standards.
So, now Paul's probably going to have to help me a little here. As I understand it, we had this in the bid document, and the bridge was according to their standards. But when the actual bridge design was done, we had, there was some soil borings taken, which changed the structure of the bridge.
Yep.
And so once that came into play, the abutments had to be much stronger and bigger, and the excavation was much more than was anticipated. And that's where we ended up with the extra $200,000 in concrete and $85,000 in other materials.
So in other words, in other words, they gave us specs for what bridge they wanted, and we gave them that hope for that bridge, correct?
Generally.
Generally?
Yep.
And now, all of a sudden, the contractor that, and I forget the name of the company, the contractor that they chose to build the bridge, says, no, we have to have this bridge. And the park doesn't want to do that.
I don't know that they...
No. The contract is with the city of Dayton. Yep. So hopefully you had a chance to read through the packet. I know it was kind of a novel.
Yeah.
But it's important to understand the history. When Tina was still here, she was having the correspondence with Three Rivers Park District staff. I was assisting with cost estimating. And if you look back at that history, when we did the initial estimate, it was about 226. We included some contingency. We were comfortable. When the bids came in, we analyzed those same numbers again, and we're still under the $300,000 number. So everything was good. We were doing them a favor, in my opinion, by putting a Three Rivers Park District amenity into a local contract, and then ultimately turning it over to them once they came up with the $300,000. So everything was good up to that point. The bids came in, we accepted the alternate, and it was done as an alternate so that we could track those prices. How we did it, we required a design-build contract for the bridge. So you have two options, well, more than two options, but generally, I'll pick on your company. You would do design details, issue it, bid it, blah, blah, blah. We took a different approach because of the timing, where we put design-build on the contractor. So they had to come up with the engineering, sign off on those drawings. I'm not a structural engineer. I can't sign off on structural engineering projects. Relatively common process. That's when the soil borings were taken. They discovered the soft soils. The rock started rolling down the hill. I do not think the contractor's numbers are good numbers. I think they're really bad numbers. But the problem is, we don't have leverage against the contractor to force them to give us good numbers.
Can we rebid it?
We can, and that's one of the options.
So, I was reading the contract, and there it says, "The city will assume primary responsibility for design, construction, and construction administration for this segment." It also says, "The park district and city desire to cooperate to obtain property rights, design, construct, and operate this contiguous corridor of trail." So I'm just, it's surprising to me that the contract says they're going to cooperate with us, and we go to them and say, hey, price was a lot more than was expected. We got to work on this. And they said, go pound sand. That's kind of what I'm getting from you.
Yep.
And the contract says they'll cooperate with us when it comes to this.
But they're holding, you know, on the other side of that contract and under the funding, they're saying, well, that's what we're committed to. That's what we're going to. And this is only a very preliminary conversation with them. I wanted to try and get your feeling about this and how we should pursue this.
My feeling is, is we agreed to build the trail that their engineer gave, or the bridge.
No, that's wrong, Mr. Solonic. We gave them the specifications. As part of our bid documents, we had two bridges. One had an eight-ton rating and eight-foot clear width and 24 feet long. The other one had, sorry, I put it on mute. It still vibrates. The other one was the Three Rivers Park District trail that had a 10-ton rating, 14-foot clear, 30 feet long. So they provided those specs to me.
Okay, yep.
Those were included as part of the documents that our contractor, Parkstone, had to provide. So it wasn't Three Rivers Park District giving us something that then came in more expensive. We knew what their standard was. That was part of the bid documents. But in my mind, and Marty and I have talked extensively on this, nobody knew at the time that soft soils were going to be a problem in that area. That's an unforeseeable circumstance. I think it's really unfortunate that Three Rivers is saying, it's your problem. It's our collective problem. I don't think the city of Dayton is responsible for those extra costs.
I would agree. And to me, we just don't build the trail.
Well, I think there's
Simple.
Several things that I want to say about this.
Yeah.
But along that line, so it's not clear in reading the contract, you know, that we, to what extent we described this bridge that they were going to get. And that, so I'm going toward the box culvert.
And that, so I'm, I'm going toward the box culvert thing that could, could potentially be done within the budget that we have.
Correct.
And I'll get to the end of what I have to say on that, is that we're not, we're not gonna eat this cost. I don't think anybody here is gonna be up for that. The Three Rivers, I think in good faith, said, you know, we've got bids, this is, this is a number they budget like we budget, okay, we'll go $300,000 on this thing. Well, we find out. I object to the unforeseeable for soil conditions statement because mud by the river, go figure.
Yeah.
Clay and
Soft soil.
And this is, this is an ongoing theme for me, I'll, I'll say that. We have yet to have a project in my time with the council that has not had unforeseen soil conditions affect the price in one way or another. Well, only in one way. But, you know, here we, here we are again. Well, I understand there was a, there was time pressure on this, but I want that to be a separate topic for us to, to talk about, is how we get away from this business. It seems that we have poor soils in this city wherever we go and we need to deal with that. We can't have these surprises on every project we do. So that's something I want to talk about separate from this. We are where we are on this, okay? So there's mud there and it's not gonna work the way that the contractor envisioned or bid it anyway. And we've got, we've got their $300,000, I think that we should try to pursue an alternate that, that fits that budget and present that to Three Rivers. And I think this is your option three, essentially. And if they say, no, we, you know, we gotta have something way cooler looking than that, then we say, well, then, you know, then we're done. I mean, we're, at this point, until they, it's their trail ultimately. We're, we're doing the work upfront, we're taking the cost on upfront, but it was, it's never with the idea that we're, we're contributing to, financially to that piece of it, to the trail or the bridges or whatever else has to happen as they continue that trail toward the old village. So I, I don't see us taking on, on any of this. I think it's our responsibility to look for an alternative that fits the budget and present it to them. And if they say no, then, you know, then we're done. We put up a sign that says trail ends here or
Yep.
You know, maybe something not that abrupt, but we don't, we don't move forward with it.
I, I don't disagree. And I want to make sure that you all understand that everything that Tina was working from, everything through the bid documents, were based on some pretty sound dollars, you know? We, we hit the mark until the soils were foreseen. And we can talk at length about how that changes the process. It certainly extends the timing, but it's not necessarily a bad thing. You just have to do more work upfront to research and analyze what you have before it goes out to bid. And in this particular instance, to meet last year's construction schedule, that was not an option. So hindsight's always 20-20. I appreciate that, you know, you're by the river and there could be poor soils and that turned out to be the case. But I don't think the contractor is wrong in asking for a change order. I don't think we are wrong in denying that change order. The contractor's, for the most part, been pretty good to work with and he's provided some analysis and some pricing. It's all preliminary. Nothing in that change order request has been acted on. We are not bound to do anything to provide additional funding and he is willing to pull that out of the contract, basically unaccept the change order. The one thing that you also need to be clear about is, even though the two bridges are very similar, they have different load ratings, we could do something different on the south side. We can't do the same box culvert design close to the river because of filling within the floodway. So that's either a bridge or nothing, where the Three Rivers Park District is a bridge, a box culvert, or nothing. And then maybe the last point I want to make sure that we're all aware is, there is an economy of scale of doing both bridges at the same time. That was the goal, was to benefit from that economy of scale, having the crane on site and having the concrete crews. However, if all of you directed Marty and I to say, no, we're only gonna do city improvements, we would potentially have enough resources to do the city bridge. I will tell you, I've also had got other conversations with a different bridge supplier. He's provided some hope that there's a, a less cost-effective way to do that, but that's not who we're under contract with. So
With the, with the economies of scale in mind, if we drop the bridge, at least the south one, are they gonna proportionally cut their, 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 their price or are they gonna still hit us with a pretty healthy?
So we have those separated enough where we can allocate the dollars.
Because of the, because they're alternates.
Right. So it was an alternate, now if we unaccept the alternate, so base bid included the city bridge, if you think of it that way, the north bridge closest to the river.
Yep.
So their pricing would have to be honored to complete that bridge. The alternate for the Three Rivers Park District Bridge was priced separately.
Is it today on one change order for both bridges?
There, we have preliminary pricing, there is no change order actuated right now.
Okay.
But it's, it is separated.
Because it would need to be separated.
It is separated, yeah. And that was one of the attachments in the packet that I provided.
So the north bridge, that price is up a little bit, like $80,000.
It is.
It's almost twice as much.
Yep.
The other one tripled.
Yeah.
And today
However, you just said we have pricing for that bridge.
We have base bid pricing that was provided when the bids were due.
Yeah.
And then we have a change order request for roughly $86,000 to make modifications to that structural system.
So in other words, you're saying we either have to go ahead and say we're gonna pay $86,000 more or not get the bridge?
For the north one.
For the north, yeah.
And the north one was not an alternate?
It was not an alternate.
So that one, they could, it wouldn't just reduce that bid by, it would reduce it from 106 down, it probably wouldn't go down to nothing, right? It would, I'm just wondering if we, if we say no on both bridges, we're really gonna get, in the end, hit hard with the north one?
No, we would, we would basically have the contractor issue a change order as a credit for those costs. We'd have some minor costs for the engineering that was done and the soil borings. Beyond that, we wouldn't have to buy that bridge if, if we processed a change order as a credit. Most often, change orders come as, as extra cost to the project, although in this instance, we've had a couple that were credits to the project to try to keep everything on task.
And you, you believe that we could get better prices than what we're seeing here if we rebid those bridges?
That's a $100,000, well, it might be a 250, I don't know how big of a question that is, but there's pros and cons to that, Mr. Fisher.
As I look at the map, so there's, there's the main cross in the middle, that's driving traffic.
Yeah.
Is there a sidewalk on that chunk or is it just a road?
It's a road bridge currently.
So if we really want to make this accessible to pedestrians on both sides, we probably need a bridge. Are we in, that's the way I look at it at least, are we in semi-agreement as a, as a council and mayor that, that we need a pedestrian bridge somewhere, otherwise we're gonna be walking across the
They're gonna walk across the road.
The road, which isn't horrible, I get it, but it isn't
Not ideal.
Not ideal. And not the most
I guess to me, so I think really we're talking about the north bridge, right? If we put one in, it's gonna be the north.
Yes, I agree.
Um, I don't know, what are the ads that, now whoever bids on this is probably gonna know. They got ad sales, they're gonna accommodate that, I would hope. If we want a bridge, it's gonna cost us money.
Right. It only makes sense if they rebid it, they're gonna pick up, pick that extra money up.
Well, it would open, by rebidding, we would open it up to a whole new pool of candidates. The only way that I would suggest you rebid it would be to, to take the extra time and go through those steps that, that we do, the engineering, that we do any other soil borings that you think would be necessary. The soil borings were only done at the north bridge location and then they took that to the south location, assuming the same thing.
Oh, interesting.
So chances are, the worst soils are immediately adjacent to the river, but it's all part of a ravine drainage way. So if we were to rebid it, I think we could get better numbers, certainly better numbers than what Parkstone is proposing in their change order, because those are essentially non-competitive prices. You know, you've all seen the, hopefully, you've all seen the cartoon with the big boat that says base bid and the, or excuse me, the little skiff that says base bid and the, the big yacht that says change order. I mean, that's a common game that contractors play, but, you know.
You should look that cartoon up for me.
We don't, we don't have leverage right now in the change order process and that's a really bad position to be in. We don't have to accept it either.
If we put the brakes on these bridges, it's not, we're not gonna get hit with, like I said, any sort of scaled penalty or
Like on the other
It's gonna simply be the 106 and the 128 off the bid.
Do you remember like the other paths and stuff that's something they may be putting in or the work that they're doing for us or just?
No, I mean, I mean, you know, like Paul said, when you, when you have two bridges
Yep.
They're gonna, they know they have the equipment there already, they're gonna be able to bid those a little cheaper. Well, halfway through the project, you say, I don't want that bridge. It's not gonna cut it in half, I, I wouldn't think, but I, again, I don't know, so.
We, we have those prices separate out enough. I could give you a reconciliation of what I think the credit to the project would be if we removed both bridges in their entirety. Moving forward, to benefit from the economy of scale, ideally, you would do both bridges at the same time.
Sure.
But that requires that Three Rivers come back to the table with additional funding if required, you know? They didn't create the issue, but neither did we.
Yeah.
You know? So for them to say, no, we're not gonna add any additional funding, you pay for it, that, to me, is just
Well, their budget's like 10 XR, so like, I don't
Eighty-four million.
Yeah, so I say we know the number, 'cause they just said it. Yeah, I was, yeah.
So if we do stop the bridges, did, how much pavement did we put on the trails? Did we go right up to the
Right up to?
Right up to the bridge?
Yeah. We haven't, not yet, no, that wasn't the original plan, but we're gonna, we can cut it short and we talked with the contractor last week about that.
The pavement isn't done up to the bridges.
Okay.
So we just have them loop up so it wouldn't look like you said?
We're gonna hold it if, we've talked about a lot of different options pending the results of this meeting, but our last conversation with the contractor was to pull it back 30 to 40 feet from the bridge abutment location so that there was enough there, that you don't want to have, you know, a little five-foot strip to make up any grade change or adjustment. So we would hold it back, we would put barricades at those locations, so it's obvious that you couldn't continue on that route. And then, you know, if, if your mandate to us was, you know, Three Rivers deal with their issue, then we would have to work out an agreement to recover the costs of the trail paving that we did on their behalf, but then of course the bridge.
That was my next question. Are they gonna hit us with that? Are they gonna say, no, we're not covering that?
I, that's a conversation we have to have and that's gonna be the next step from here.
How much are we talking about there?
Paul, you got those, I think Paul's got the number somewhere.
I mean, I would think it's like 20, 30 grand or something. I don't remember if there was a breakdown in that contract.
Yeah, the regional trail and bridge total was 202 originally, but then in our cost estimate, there was a lot of other costs, indirect costs, mobilization or whatever that they needed to share in for them, doing the favor to them. I wanna say it's 50 to 60,000.
I guess, in a way, it probably doesn't necessarily matter, they're probably still gonna hit the 300 regardless of what we do next year. I mean, time, they're, they're at least gonna do the 300, I would guess, if they want this.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I'm inclined to put the brakes on both.
Well, I want to understand, I think I read that, that we've got contingency available that could potentially cover the increase on the north bridge and some other solution to the south bridge. Did I read that correctly?
That would be the box
That would be the box deal on the south.
The box culvert.
So the box culvert, based on the preliminary numbers, and again, they are preliminary from the contractor, that should be about a wash to what the total bridge cost would have been.
So the original 128?
Uh, correct. And then on the contingency, we currently have $85,040.95 after the change order later this evening.
Okay, that was another question I had, are we, we're not double dipping on what's left in the contingency pool?
No. Right now, we have 130 some, uh, no, sorry, whatever, 85 plus the 46 is one, yeah, 131.
So the contingency almost covers the north bridge?
Yeah, correct.
Well, when we spend it out of a contingency or out of the, out of the park fund, we're still spending it.
We're still spending it.
It's some money spent, I don't disagree, but it's not new money we have to fund, it's already kind of in that bucket for the process.
We can fund this today, we got park money, but it's a matter of, you know, what's, what makes the most sense.
Correct me here, the, the whole idea behind the north bridge, that's where we did this, that's where they did the soil borings.
Correct.
This little soft soil thing just drives me crazy, because when somebody, when somebody gives you that bid, they should be taking care of that before they ever do it.
Keep hammering.
It's a timing thing, quite honestly, it's
It's not about timing. You give it to me for this price, it's up to you to make sure you've got your covers, your costs covered.
I, I understand what you're saying, you will pay more in the end if you put that risk on the contractor, because for every project that, it doesn't come up, you just paid for it. So the way to deal with it, Mr. Solanik, is to do that work yourself
Yourself, yeah.
Ahead of time, but don't put it on the contractor.
How much is the soil boring, rough, very rough?
Five grand.
Okay, so.
Well, so that was a timing thing, why we wouldn't have done that first, I, I get all that. It's still possible that soil boring comes back better for the south side or is that?
I mean, if you asked me, told me to rebid this on your behalf, I would engage a soil con, or soil scientist to come out and do soil borings on that. We would take the information that we already have for the north location.
Sure.
We would hire Stan Tech or whoever does structural engineering on bridges to come up with a complete package that then gets sent out to bids and those are your hard costs. The contractor knows what he's getting into, you know? In some ways, I'm surprised we didn't run into more issues on Elsie Stevens, given its history as an operating farm. We didn't, we didn't hit a burial mound, we didn't hit a bunch of oil in barrels underneath or chemicals.
Sure.
We could
Trash, just dump.
Yeah, so, but, you know.
Okay.
It's the benefit of, of 20-20 hindsight, certainly.
Well, I, I guess I'll say what I'm, I'm thinking and I think we need to come to some conclusion around this, but, so these are my thoughts. But we've got contingency, we could continue with the north bridge with the change to that pricing, because that's gonna be on our nickel ultimately anyway, not Three Rivers. I think we have to hold on the Three Rivers piece and if we believe rebidding it would help, I'm, I'm good with that. If we think that, you know, designing and, and installing the, the box culvert, I think that, that fits the budget, then that's what we go back to Three Rivers with and say, this is what you get for your 300,000, is the trail and, and this crossing. And if that's a no-go for them, then, then it's a no-go for now. We, we put the hold on that piece of it. But I would like to see the north, the north bridge.
Yep.
Go ahead, I'm not happy about the pricing, but it is what it is.
I'll second, but
Is it conceivable that it applies more pressure to Three Rivers if we put that north bridge in? Because now we've got a connection, we don't need their connection. Or they just not care.
Conceivably.
Yeah. I think, I think that north bridge is gonna be one of the coolest spots in the Dayton Park system, you know, right on the river, sit there and rest on the rail and, and watch the river flow by.
I hear you.
So I, I've pushed Marty to, to try to find a way that we can still do that. I'm, I'm hopeful that, knowing what we know now, that we can work with the contractor, maybe work with this other bridge supplier to come up with a modified design that ultimately spends less of that contingency.
So Mike, another question I would have is, is they did the soil boring, right? And so we're basically, do we get to look at that soil boring?
We have it, yeah.
We have, okay. And it is for sure money soil, without question.
Yeah, it's, it's
So it's not just, they're saying that there's money, money soil there?
No. No.
Okay.
No, no.
I think what I would like to understand is why Three Rivers don't like the idea of the box culvert at this stage. They don't consider it a bridge, but I think that we could have that conversation with them and maybe, you know, push them towards that idea once it's box culvert or nothing. But I think we have to have that conversation.
I don't, I don't have a problem with doing that. We, we go ahead and do the north deal, and it's either box culvert or nothing.
So the contract just.
You tell them that, just like that. This is what you get.
It didn't spell out.
No, it says structure.
It says structure, box culvert, it's pretty good structure.
Yeah. That's my approach.
Yeah. In other words, then, okay, so with that, we are upholding the contract?
I would.
I think that that would be.
Through our eyes.
The message, right?
Yeah.
Says to cooperate with us.
I'm okay with that. I think what they're saying is, cool. I'm, I'm not sure of the looks of a box culvert. I don't know what it would end up looking like. It would certainly function.
It's going to look identical to the one that, if you've been out to the site, there's a, a box culvert in place where the road crossing is, it would look identical to that.
But it's going to have railings and stuff.
Yeah, you're going to have to grade it down and whatever, and there's going to be probably problems with maybe enforcement or something. By the way, how are we doing with the box culvert? As far as graffiti, as far as troubles, nothing?
Are you talking about the one under River Road?
The one under the River Road.
No, there's nothing. I was down there the other week, and there's nothing in there at all. But I think it's good having the lights in there as well. I think that helps. But I was surprised there's no graffiti in there at all.
And just to be clear. When you put the lights in, people stop sleeping in there. Yeah, you laugh, but it's true. When lights went up, people stopped sleeping.
Never stopped me.
Okay, where are you guys at?
To be clear, the box culvert, if you were to do that for the north bridge location, you're, you're going over that, you're not going through it.
Yeah.
The water goes through the box culvert, the trail goes over the top.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we don't have the box culvert option on the north end?
Correct, because of floodway impact.
Right.
If you were to rebid both of them, say that you didn't like either of the numbers, and you wanted to, to send it out after having a more complete structural design to be bid from, you still have to have an agreement with, a modified agreement with Three Rivers that they're on the hook for potentially additional monies. We don't know what those monies are yet, and that's why it's a little cleaner to just wipe them from the contract.
Okay.
But.
And, and they may, you know, come around if they, at some point in the discussion, but I, you know, if the, if the illusion right now is that, that we're going to throw in several hundred thousand dollars to cover the difference, I think that's, that's a nice try, but it's not going to happen.
I, I totally agree with you.
I think it's only more expensive, so if they decide to wait and do it later, it's only going to cost them more to do it four or five years down the road, too. Like, it's not going to get cheaper to build these things, so.
Yeah.
No, and ultimately, they're carrying, they're supposed to be carrying the cost of that whole West River Trail.
Yeah.
And I think we set a, a terrible precedent if we just say we're going to cover any gaps in that.
And I, and I think we may have a little bit more leverage with the, the water trail and the Gooden Park scenario, where they're getting the trail head there, and we've applied, you know, if we're successful, we'll get that federal grant, which will cover the build-out cost of that for them. So that's, you know, a pretty big bargaining chip that I would try and use.
Do you need a motion, or?
Where are you guys at?
I'm with the, the build the north, and we'll tell them the box culvert, and see what they come back to the table with.
It still doesn't solve the whole issue of, of when you get a bid, build me this for what you bid.
But this time, it was our fault, because we rushed it, we didn't choose to do the bore work before we went out for bid. That's, that's what I heard, at least, maybe I misheard it, but.
I think that's an overall, that's a consistent problem, and I.
I think that's a discussion that we have, yeah, like you mentioned earlier.
I don't, don't disagree.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all.
Well, we can't go back and change that on this, but we can change it going forward. I agree.
It's an 84,000 dollar lesson again.
Well, so I think we need a motion. I can make that motion, that we proceed with the north bridge, change order, and, and use contingency dollars to cover that, and we do design work, whatever we need to do to get a price, or work with the contractor to get pricing around a box culvert for the south bridge, and, and continue with that, that discussion with Three Rivers, to see if that's going to ultimately acceptable to them or not.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Fashan, just making sure our ducks are in a row, I think the conversation with the county, with Three Rivers Parks, excuse me, is, do you have any interest in a box culvert? Because if you don't, we're not doing anything.
Correct.
We don't want to waste the contractor's time, or anybody else's time, for a box culvert, if they're a hard no on that.
I, I think that the idea is just to, to know that, so that we're not sitting here again, talking about, well, it turns out that box culvert doesn't fit the budget either, and we got Three Rivers to agree, and now we're, where are we again? So I, I think we need to have some confidence that, you know, that we can do that for the existing budget. And if, and if we do, then that's, then we approach it, you know, approach them with it, and, and say, this is, you know, this is what you can buy with your money, and, and if not, not.
Because I have you here tonight, and we're talking about this issue, the numbers that we've been given for the north bridge are preliminary. The contractor really has no incentive to play nice and provide us with better numbers. If he came back and said, these are your hard numbers, and it's 50 grand more than we talked about tonight.
Are we obligated to use that contract?
Yes, under a change order scenario.
Well, I think, so then, all of a sudden, I would say, if that happens, then we go and get a new contractor.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I, I'm with you. I, I think, I mean, we know, I mean, we are, we hate change orders because, because of that reason in general. I mean, it's, we pay retail for, you know, you give us the number, and that's our number. And I know there's things that control some of that when there's pre-established bid quantities for this kind of rock and that kind of payment and so on. But this isn't the case here. He gets to give us the number, and we can say yes or no. If it's, if it's something dramatically different than this 86,000 dollar ad, then I think we have to talk about it again.
Yeah, understood. I just want you to be fully aware of where we are in the process and what we're contractually able to do versus what we're a little bit at the mercy of the pricing. So, and that's where, you know, rebidding it is not free. If we were to come back and, and rebid both bridges, that's not free. You would have to expend quite a bit of dollars to, to get another package out on the street, go through the bidding process, accept those bids, and have hard competitive numbers to do it from. But that might be ultimately the end result.
And that 86 is, is the ballpark they gave us, or?
Yes.
Clearly, somebody came up with that number, because that's not our number.
So my guess is, my guess is that, that that's what they're going to come in at. Okay, so, so we got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Could you, aye?
Aye, aye, Captain.
It's unanimous.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Marked that one down. I did. We had one last meeting, too.
Okay, all right.
I think it was me again, right?
Yeah. Thanks, Paul.
I, yeah, for change order number five.
Yeah. I think I'm good with that, but I just need some backup.
Okay, the next item is the pressure tank repairs at Wellhouse One, which services well one and well three on the northwest water distribution system. The pressure tank was initially installed in 2000 as a temporary measure. There was one well there for many years, up until a couple of years ago, when we installed well three. The pressure tank couldn't be taken out of service, because you would just take the water out of the old village by turning, taking that out of service. So, long story short, there was no inspections or anything done on that pressure tank until this year, when we could do that, because we've got the two wells, so we can run them off the pressure of the system. Before, it was just an on/off, when it gets to this level, it's, the well switches on, when it gets to that, it turns off. So we had some inspection work done there, and the report is in the packet, as you would expect from something that's over 20 years old and been in continuous service, as deterioration within the tank that needs to be adjusted and repaired. I think he's documented it pretty well. What we're looking at is doing the interior part of this, this work, and putting in a reasonable-sized man, manway there, so you can actually get in and do the work. So that was everything that was in the, in the, in the bid. This should add 10 to 15 years of life to that tank, at least. And going forward, this tank will always be in, in service one way or another, even if it's a backup, when we have a water tower down there.
Okay, my question to this is going to be, they inspected the work they need to do before they gave us the number, correct?
Correct.
I don't have any problem with this, this is just regular maintenance, but they do it for that number. There is no change order again.
That, that would be what it is.
Is the, the man cover now is, is undersized? Is this something that OSHA is driving?
No, it's more from a practical point of view, because we kind of get in there to take a look at. That's, the manway is very, very small, so you can't get in there with tools or anything. I don't know why it was designed that way, maybe in 2000, that was the appropriate size, I don't know.
I think it was just, it's merely an inspection cover, not an access cover.
Yeah, it's, it's an inspection cover. It's a bigger, I think this one, they're putting in is a 24-inch, and I probably still wouldn't get through it anyway, you know? Unless there's a lot of Vaseline on site.
That's why you've got guys, you've got people.
You got it.
Patrick's got guys.
How, when we put this as a temporary solution 20 some-odd years ago, how long do we think this would be a temporary solution for? Like, when the decision, I, I wasn't here, so the decision was made, like, when the decision was made, how long was this designed to be temporary for? I know we're going to use either way, I'm just curious, I guess.
Not this long.
Okay.
In fact, we had, I think, the long-term plan back almost 10 years ago, had a tower down there. Go ahead.
I, I might actually be able to add a little bit onto there. This was built in 2000. At that time, there was preliminary development plans for what's known as the Homer property, has since been sold for, and I'm probably getting this wrong, is the, the school, I believe, as well as a development. At that time, the tower and additional well was to be built. So I think when they had temporary mind, they were thinking like three to five years. So, I might be off on some of that, I was just part of the company that worked on that and heard some of it, so. But again, that was in 2000.
So my second question is, do we budget for this, this year, and the other, and we're doing the other tower as well, and some maintenance in the tower? Are, do these things that we budget for, is like, we're going to have to maintain these, so it's built into the budget or not?
This one I didn't budget for.
Okay.
Because I didn't know what it was going to be, and I didn't know what they were going to find, whether it's going to be $25,000 or $75,000 or $100,000. So I didn't budget for it, I was just going to do the, get the report done, see what's in. But I think that, you know, Tommy's of the essence with this, because it's such an important piece of the infrastructure down there. Without that, we don't have any water in the, in the old village, so.
But the water tower, we budgeted for.
The water tower's budgeted for us in the COP, yes.
So in a way, there, yeah. So we put money into the, the water costs, and it builds up that fund, and this is kind of like a buffer, so.
I, I'm just curious.
Yep, so it's really hard to budget for these kind of things, other than you're, you're amortizing some cost.
I mean, honestly, you know, I ran maintenance budgets for many years, and, and you don't predict everything that's going to break in the next year. You just know that historically, we spend about this much a year on stuff, and I'll fill in the blanks later, and this would be one of those.
Yeah, you hope there's, yeah, not more blanks than you, than you can cover, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you need, let me see, did you need action on this?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion, go ahead and accept it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Scott and Travis, any more discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
More Marty.
I, I feel like something's coming.
Item R.
Just change order, that's all. I hate bringing change orders, but, and the last item is a change order for the park improvements project, 20, park improvements project 2022 is change order five. This was for some additional fine grading and seeding, and geotextile fabric, the costs of which ended up being 46,302 dollars.
This is something you want, just that, we want this, right?
Yeah, we need this, yeah. This, what were you asking, Scott, I guess?
I'm asking, originally, originally, we, when we, this project was bid, this is over and above.
Yes.
So this is extra on what we want.
Correct.
The part of this, I would, I will hold my hands up on this. The hydro seeding is down to me overpromising what my guys could do. Instead of moving enough material off of the site, we ran out of time, we didn't have the manpower to do it, and the project got started, we didn't get it off of there. And instead of having it trucked out, we used it into the, the, the design of the project. We used that material building berms and some features like that. And so this is the additional seeding cost that goes along with that. So it's my fault, because I overpromised, so.
There were huge stockpiles of soil on Elsie Stevens from a variety of projects.
Right, all seen, yes, yeah.
The bid documents assumed that City Cruise would be able to move that. That was not possible. It would have cost tens of thousands of dollars to move it offsite, find a new home for it. So we opted to change the design.
Use, use the.
We had some initial clearing of trees and, and use that to fill, and it actually made a real nice mounded earth form, but we had to seed it. It was just a, a much larger footprint, project footprint than originally anticipated.
We're, we're going to need to see it, correct?
Yeah.
Seated.
It's got to be.
It hasn't been.
No, it has been done. The seed has been done.
Whoa. Okay, so now.
That's what I don't like about change orders, so usually after the, the event, you know? But this isn't going to affect what we were just discussing about the bridge, because the contingency is still there. Contingency will still be enough to cover that.
I'm just going to, so why, why did we, why are we even talking about it, if we already did it?
It's a contractual requirement. We, we have to track that via a change order. A change order is a legal document of the contract.
Okay.
The work has been done, so we owe the contractor that money. We had contingency money to cover it. It had to be done last fall as part of SWIP requirements, and also to have it dormant seeded, so that it would be growing, which it is this spring. So Marty and I made the decision to, to move forward with it.
How big an area was it to cost 31 grand?
Pretty big on Stevens.
Was it?
Yeah, it's a lot, there was a lot of dirt that we covered that we moved around.
Almost two acres.
Oh, okay.
I guess my only, my only concern on that is, moving forward, before we go and spend 50,000 over what the job was originally approved, approved for, maybe we should have that discussion back in October or something.
And some of the times, you have to make the decision onsite at that time, when the seeding guy's there, and.
You don't have two weeks.
Rather than, than having to get a mobilization cost on the back end of it and stuff. And so I, I did what I thought was the right thing at the time.
And, and this did not come out of the contingency, or?
No, this is going to come out the contingency.
Well, and that leaves the 86 for the other.
Yeah.
Or 80, whatever it is, so, yeah, okay.
So we haven't gone over the budget on the project.
Technically, it's still in budget.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to motion.
I'll second.
Dave, what do you want to say, Dave? You look like you want to say something.
So Travis with a motion, and Matt with a second, you want to, more?
Yeah, well, I think this is helpful, because I read the background, and I, I couldn't really see my way through to what, what actually happened and what we, what was causing it. So I, I appreciate understanding. And it doesn't change the outcome we want, it's not really an add in that sense. It's, you know, it's, it's dealing with something that we had to deal with, and like everything, it has an additional cost, but not wrong to do, in my view.
No, I mean, the dirt, to move the dirt would have cost 20, 30,000, or maybe 40,000 bucks, too?
Correct. It ultimately saved money to do it onsite. Obviously, it costs more seeding, but I think the net result is a savings, unless we could have done it with City Cruise, which was not possible.
Yeah, that was pretty good dirt.
Second?
That was pretty good dirt.
Yeah.
Could open it up to the public and say, hey.